Call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all of those who have passed away in our community, especially Marty Davitt, a lifelong North Scranton resident and brother-in-law of our city planner, Don King. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A breakdown of eligible salaries for the liquid fuels account for the months of January, February, and March 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3B tax assessors' report for hearing date to be held April 25, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3C minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority held March 5, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D minutes of the regular meeting of the Lackawanna County Land Bank held March 9, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have one, the Central Scranton Expressway will close this Wednesday, April 18th at 8:00 PM and remain closed until April 23rd for removal of the old Harrison Avenue Bridge. Detours during the closure will be on Music Street for cars and Davis Street for trucks, so please keep that in mind.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodowanitz, and before citizens' participation begins, I see there's a lot of new faces here tonight, so I'd just like to ask everyone, as you speak, state your name for the record, and you have five minutes to discuss whatever topic you wish.
Joan Hodowanitz, Scranton resident and taxpayer. I've got my questions in writing, so...but again, I'd be interested in the status of the Arcadis study, if you could comment on that during motions, and what, if anything, is the city going to do about reassessment? Those two issues should not be forgotten. And then a new item, on April 11th, there was a very interesting article in the Times-Tribune, "State to Fund Filling-In of Mine Voids Under Lackawanna College Building in Downtown Scranton." And then the next day, there was an editorial which reads in part as follows, quote, "Such a project in the middle of the downtown begs the question of what else lurks beneath city streets? It's especially important because of a wave of residential conversion projects that are planned or underway in big downtown buildings. The Courtwright Administration and City Council should seek an analysis to determine the extent to which mine-void projects have been successful downtown." Now, I agree with the question which the editorial poses about what lurks beneath city streets. In 1963, one week before President Kennedy was assassinated, my family's home caved, and we were put out on the street overnight. We were homeless for eight months, there was no GoFundMe project, there was no American Red Cross to the rescue, we were just homeless. And having gone through that trauma once before, I would not want to do that again. Wayne, I know you live downtown, and I think you own your own apartment, too. And so, the $450,000 which are going to be spent, apparently Lackawanna County will be reimbursed by the state, who in turn is using federal tax dollars. So I have the following comments, apparently a lot of tax dollars, both municipal and county taxes, have been diverted to downtown revitalization. You know what the city's done, what was it, Lackawanna 500, things that the county is doing like buying the old Globe store. Shouldn't the taxpayers be told about the potential for mine subsidence in the downtown area where they have invested a lot of their tax dollars? Also, I strongly recommend that the City Council invite the city engineer to a public caucus to discuss the possibility of future mine subsidence in the downtown area, as well as in the surrounding neighborhoods. I can't believe that the only mine void that exists in Scranton is under that one building, which I think you could hit with a stone if you throw it from here. So, you know, I can't understand why Lackawanna County would be bothering with testing for the mine void and then finding one and getting a grant for $450,000 if there was no problem. But I can't believe that that problem ends at the borders of that one property. So I look to you to give the taxpayer some answers on this issue. I wouldn't want anybody to go through what I went through when I was 13 years old in 1963. And then on item 5D, on these quality-of-life changes, have we ever come up with a system for tracking how much revenue's been brought in under this program and where they came up with the dollar figures for some of these problems? Unlicensed dogs, $75; dangerous vicious dog or other animal, $150, so on and so forth. I'm not quite convinced that it makes any sense to pass ordinances and then A, not enforce them, and B, not let the taxpayer know how much revenue is coming out of this. Is it even worth having them? You know? Just a couple of questions I'd like answered, thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Welby still here? I saw his name was crossed off. Bill Pilconis?
Good evening all. That's, my name is Bill Pilconis.
My apologies.
I don't think the address was not written there. I live in Scranton, 1617 Myrtle Street, lifelong resident of this wonderful burg. So, my first reason to come out to you guys today is I am the sitting president of the, well, the president of the Lackawanna County Green Party here in Scranton, and we are at the beginning of what we're calling our Green Week of Action. Last year we started it and we've been continuing it, taking, you know, quantifiable steps forward to try to improve this area, all of the county, from cleanups to citizen engagement projects, rallies, documentaries, and all that. One thing you guys probably don't know, a blessed thing about the Green Party, so we are based on four pillars. The, they are grassroots democracy, social justice, peace, and ecology. And I'd like to speak to you guys, in particular about the one, the fourth one, ecology today. We have a set of values that we go by and assess everything we do, and I'd just like to read one small paragraph from our key value on future focus on sustainability. So, "Our actions and policies should be motivated by long-term goals. We seek to protect valuable natural resources, safely disposing of or unmaking all waste that we do create, while developing sustainable economic models that do not depend on continued expansion for survival." To that end, we have been working to try to clean up the city and improve a number of the programs that the city and the county engage in. And one that we started looking at and noticed was Act 101, and I don't know if you guys are aware of Act 101 as a state act. It has to do with our obligations to meet recycling needs here in the city and in the county, and quite frankly, I think there is more action that can be taken to that regard. And my associate, John, will be speaking after me on specific steps we can move to go forward with this and hopefully increase Scranton's obligation to deal with the litany of waste that we do create. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Morrow?
Good evening, council, thank you very much. I'd like to preface my comments by stating that although I am known for associations with various organizations, I am tonight speaking as a private citizen in support of the Green Party, a registered Democrat. So, this Sunday is Earth Day, and I think that it needs to be addressed, the issue that sustainability is not an issue that is often considered when addressing programs such as our recycling here in Scranton. E-waste in particular is a particular problem, it's expensive, problematic, and we've seen, if anyone saw the picture in the Times Tribune yesterday of the e-waste dumped over by the Westside High School, that is what happens when you do not have an effective, comprehensive recycling program. We would like to see the city focus on having a more comprehensive program, and while Act 101 is a bit of an outdated piece of legislation, I think that we need to be certain that we do adhere to it as well as we can. I do understand that there are fiscal considerations to all this, and I think the city might do well by working with such groups who are willing to come out, do cleanups, maintain the city and for its own civic pride to clean up the city, to prevent things such as dumping. I find often vacant lots down by the river, et cetera, we are finding garbage, and quite often it's all televisions, other forms of electronic waste. I want to note that we should commend the University of Scranton, this Saturday they are holding an e-waste program, and folks can go to the Community Relations website and Facebook page for the university, they have all the information there, and I'd like to encourage people to let everyone know that this is a great opportunity for anyone to clean out such waste. There are televisions and computer monitors dumped up and down the streets of Scranton. This is a problem, and once they're dumped on the side, if the screens are broken, any broken glass, they are no longer recyclable, it is problematic. This needs to be addressed and handled in a much more organized and comprehensive fashion. I would like to say also that the Green Party is working hard to be a responsible member of this community, that people are very concerned about the issue, in particular with recycling and sustainability as a whole. And I think, myself, I am not native to this city, I am new here, and the environmental impact that the fossil fuels industry has created here due to their lack of foresight is exemplified by the remediation program that has to be acted out right across the street from where I live at 414 Adams Avenue, at the new Lackawanna College building. This is an example where, I know we have our fiscal concerns, but there are certain costs that are beyond any monetary measure, and these are precisely the kind of lack of consideration that has been exhibited in the past. We are now paying the price for our forefathers' lack of consideration of these issues. I'd like the council to please consider, to see that the city does work more. And being anti-privatization, I do advocate for some governmental and private industry programs that would be most effective in handling these problems, especially with the consideration of the costs. And we would like to take this opportunity to establish a dialogue with the council and the city to address these issues in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Marge Kravitz?
Marge Kravitz, overtaxed taxpayer. Today I would like to talk about the dog license. Now, the county is $5 a year and $30 a lifetime. Now, the city of Scranton is $30 a year. I would like to know why. I went up to the license department, and they told me, well, thank city of council, because they put it in ordinance, $30 a year. So, Mr. Rogan, you were on council the longest. Why is it $30 a year?
I believe it was raised under Mayor Dougherty's last budget to $30, when there was a number of fees that were raised to increase revenue for the city.
Okay, are you, are you planning to lower that?
Personally, no, I was not. I can't speak for the college.
No, are you guys planning to lower to $5 a year, $30 a lifetime, like the county? Why are we different? Everybody else is paying lower, lower, and we're paying $30 a year? Do you know, if you have two dogs, it's $60, plus you have to get them, like, vaccinated, the shots, and you know, I think, that costs money. Are you planning to lower that? I would like to know. Rogan?
Nobody has suggested lowering it until you, just tonight, so...
Well, would you consider it? Before I start paying at it?
Well, for this year, it's going, it's going to remain the same, because it was passed the last year's budget.
Right now, I'm selling my house, and if I sell it, I'll lose that money to the city of Scranton. And why is it $30 a year? Can I ask you that?
Again, that was the number that was picked by the previous administration as the cost of registering.
Well, you were there, you were...
I was on council, but I was not...
You were on council at that time.
But I was not part of the decision-making process to set the fees, that's done by the administration.
Well, upstairs, they told me that council said it. Thank council for it.
They say that a lot upstairs.
Okay, another thing is, they also told me that nobody in the city of Scranton is going around checking on this. So if we have to pay $30 a year and nobody's checking on it, where is that money going to? Do you know? You should know. Your council! Aren't your council, you should know where the money is going to?
All of the fee, all the departmental fees go to run those departments.
And you don't know where it's going to? Where nobody's going, they told me nobody's going to go out there and check.
Would you like the city to go house-to-house and check to make sure dogs are registered?
Well, if I pay $30 a year, yeah!
Because I think most other people would be pretty upset about that.
Well, if I have to pay it, yeah! Okay, another thing, Mr. Donahue, the garbage tax, are you going to have a percentage off every pay, like, like last year?
There already is a percentage off, and by ordinance, right now, it's May 1st, I'm actually going to make a request in motions that the administration extend that to at least May 15th.
No.
Because of the fact that garbage bills haven't gone out yet, is that what you're referring to?
No, the 10% off.
Yes, the discount, so it's 270.
Now, is that going to everybody?
Yes.
That's everybody.
As long as it's paid within the, before the discount deadline.
Why can't you lower it? I don't understand that. I only have...
Me personally, I would like to lower it.
I only have one bag a week.
I, I, I understand that, and I, I agree with you that it needs to be lowered, but the only reason I voted for it this year was because it was already placed as revenue in the budget before I even got here.
Okay, why don't you make 10% off for everybody? Not like, you're making a 10% off if you pay it all in full, right?
Yes.
Why don't you make a 10% off for everybody, no matter how they pay for it? Because you're discriminating against me, because I can't pay for it. I can't pay that 270 off the bat. Now, if I, if I could, like, pay 270 cut, like, you know, installment, yes. Mr. Gahan, I want to ask you one question. Now, I came to you a couple of months ago about a property on Church Avenue and Furinian Street, it's being flooded, the water is not going down the shore. Well, today, the Pennsylvania Water Company came and flushed it out. An hour later, they had a lake, it's a lake again. And they told us to go to the engineer department. Now, did you contact the engineer department for us?
Yes, we contacted, Mrs. Reed contacted the DPW director, actually on multiple occasions, and we were told that they were not going to go out and fix that because there's already a grate, or mill it, because there's already a grate there. There's already a, a place where the water could go. Now, obviously, I saw the pictures, so I know that it's an issue, but there's only so far that I can take it, because...
What could we do about it? Do we have to go to the...
Your, your, your time is up, thank you.
I will reach out to him again, because I know that that is an issue, but again, I, you know...
It's a shame that she has, well, take some money off of her taxes then. You know? Give her a couple thousand dollars off her taxes to look like that.
Your ti, your time is up. Mark Seitzinger?
Good evening, council, Mark Seitzinger, Green Ridge resident, Scranton resident, president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. I'm here on two things. Number one, Sheets. Just to give you guys a little bit of background, the area is zoned for that type of business. That's number one. Number two, competition's not a bad thing in the city, especially when we have a business coming in or wants to come in. It's not a bad thing here. It'll bring in money to the area that we didn't have, taxes, permit fees, construction fees, and most importantly, out of all of it, jobs. It's going to bring jobs to the city, something that I don't know if we have necessarily coming in right now. The one thing that you have to remember is that you're voting on traffic and traffic signals. The business is not yours, it's not yours to vote on. That's Planning Commission, Zoning, Zoning Board, all that. In terms of the alcohol sales, and that's been a concern for some, there's a business right down the street across Memorial Stadium, Stalter's Cafe, I believe it's called, they sell alcohol, it's a bar. I believe it's pretty much the same distance from the school as the Sheets would be. So I think it meets the LCB requirements to be far enough away from a school. So that's all I'm going to say on that. We had a meeting last week with our neighborhood association. Our neighborhood association, because we kind of take in Pine Brook at this point, they don't have a neighborhood association anymore, as far as I know, we're for it. Our neighborhood group was 100% behind this and still remains 100% behind this. The second thing that I want to talk about is Crowley Park. Although we're grateful that the city did a study on the soil, and even more grateful that we're getting $350,000 in the budget according to Mayor Courtright and the budget for a park, we still have problems up there. The plans for the park look great, and we can't wait for the Green Ridge residents to use it, as was promised back in Novem, early November, end of October. However, we still have dumping up there. As of Saturday, there were many piles of concrete with rusted rebar and pipes that are all rusted in that area. Some of the concrete has yellow markings on it, which according to PA1 call, and based on my knowledge, are gas lines. I realize that things have to look worse sometimes to get better, but this isn't getting any better for us over there. We have one park in our neighborhood, and that's what we have, we have piles of concrete, rusted rebar, pipes, all piled in the back of the park. If you guys would like, I can email you guys the pictures of it, so that you guys have them for your records, I'll be more than happy to do that this evening, so that you guys have those pictures, and you guys can have them for your records. Also, do you have a timetable on that project? For the park?
We could check.
I'd appreciate that, thank you. And the last thing that I have is in terms of dog, dog, the dog licenses. I believe back in 2014, which was the last year that I was here, I believe the budget did pass a $25 fee on the dog licenses, so that fee has increased during the course of the past four years, but I do believe it went up to $25 when we were in office. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Chamco?
Evening, gentlemen. Edward Chamco Senior, lifetime resident of the city of Scranton, business owner, family-owned business since 1905. I'm here just to give my personal thoughts on the Sheets project. I've spoken to many people, and their major concern is the traffic. Well, I spoke to a couple of people within the city government today, and they really didn't realize what I had said to them until I said it. The first thing is, the traffic situation was one of the big items that was brought up by other people against Sheets. It's going to be a bottleneck. Well, let's grab the bull by the horns and see where that bottleneck is. The first bottleneck starts every morning at school time, beginning of school, and the second bottleneck starts again when school is getting out. There are two travel lanes, north and south, on South Seventh, or, South Seventh Avenue, North Seventh Avenue, sorry, and a turning lane in each. Go there at, when students are coming to school, look at all the illegal parked vehicles, double parked, many of them. Supposed to be two travel lanes, now there's only one. Traffic gets backed up, same thing in the afternoon, and that's both the north and south. There's plenty of room on the Scranton High School property for those parents who are picking up their children to park and pick them up. There's plenty of parking over by the stadium, inside the school. Let them park over there, get them off of the street. That's the first problem with the traffic. The second problem is the traffic signals. There should be a turn-left arrow on all four turns of that road, both on Linden Street and Seventh and Lackawanna and Seventh. Third part of the traffic is, look at the intersections of Linden and North Seventh. You basically have to, driving your vehicle, be at a crawl. The pavement is in such deplorable condition there, people just aren't going to want to drive the speed limit, or 15 or 20 miles an hour, they're doing three and four miles an hour. So instead of getting 30 vehicles through that traffic signal, you're getting eight or nine. It's the same thing at Lackawanna Avenue. You need four left-turn signals. I understand it's an expensive situation to do that, but I was, under the interpretation that Pendot was also looking at this, make that suggestion to them, that's going to And as far as Sheets itself, the only comments that I have is my own experience with Sheets, not just in our area, but out of state. Any facility that I have ever been at, at a Sheets, it is immaculate all the time. I cannot say that of our Turkey Hills, I cannot say that of our convenience stores. There are good people working there, there are good people that own them, but in comparison, we're looking at a palace compared to the stadium at our local football stadium. The stand that sells the food and concession stands, that's what you're comparing it to. Our city has, has been in the past several years, been not business-friendly. We have to turn that around. Sheets is a good opportunity to do that. You're in an area that there was a block and cinder company there for how many years it looked like it was a dump. Good people ran it, but that's the way that business operates. That was Keystone. That was Keystone. Sheets wants to come in. They had Geisinger over there, Mount Pleasant, really cleaned up that whole entire section. As you're leaving the city, looking at it, you say, oh, wow. It's a nice view now. There's no longer a dump and trash, not trash, but ashes and everything else all piled in large quantities. The last thing I'd like to say is, as a community, Scranton should be happy that we're getting a facility as Sheets is bringing to our area, our city, my neighborhood, and all the neighbors down there are thrilled about it too. Sorry I went over.
Thank you, Mr. Chamco. Sylvia Parker?
Someone gave me this and asked me would I share it with council tonight. My name is Sylvia Parker, property owner, taxpayer, city of Scranton. Hello, neighbors. The next meeting of the Hill neighbor will be held on Wednesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM at St. Peter's Lutheran Church on the corner of Taylor Avenue and Ash Street. This meeting will be focused on regrouping, and we have two guest speakers. Our first speaker will be Sidney Snyder from Prescott Elementary School, PTA, discussing the new playground at the school. And the second speaker will be James Hoover from PAWC, discussing the work that the water company is doing in the Hill section neighborhood. Thank you, Nicole Petnato, president. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Lee Morgan?
You know, it's a shame, Lee Morgan, Scranton. You know, it's a shame that the council can't go to the transcribed record of the meeting to make sure that they captured everything that the speaker said here today because council saved $5,000, but they wouldn't give up any of their pay to help the city. Today, I thought I'd read an editorial out of the Scranton Times newspaper. Electric City Dark. I read about the Scranton School District raising taxes again. This is just wrong. Many Scranton residents are poor and don't even have kids in school. What happened to that proposal of the Homestead Rule exemption the voters approved in 2017 to mandate property tax relief? The city has had different mayors and different councils, but taxpayers see the same old story. Officials are always putting the bite on the taxpayer. There's never another way, and they don't even look for it. People are sick of it. Why are the taxpayers responsible because elected officials can't run a city or a school district properly? A few years back, taxpayers paid the bill for a new Scranton high school. We paid the tax, and what do we get for it? The factories are gone, and there are no jobs. There is high unemployment. The roads are full of potholes. Tax money is spent on stupid stuff like a tree park at Naug. I have a postage stamp-sized yard and a house that is more than 100 years old and is falling apart. You don't even feel safe in the neighborhood anymore because of crime and drugs and transient people passing through. This is why people leave Scranton. Why stay and get taxed to death? We are tired of a city that is always distressed, depressed, and always in debt. Nobody knows how to handle money. The lights have been off in the electric city for years. Now, if you read the newspaper every day, there's almost always an article in the paper. And last week, if there were rules of council, I don't know how Councilman Donahue could launch a verbal attack that I read in the Scranton Times newspaper against a county official. So I assume that there are no rules of council. And you know, the other thing I think is this, and it's pretty, just point blank, straight on, I don't know why Mr. Balls has a problem with Mr. Gahan. But you know something, and with all due respect to you, you know, if you're the lone person there who's out for the taxpayers, is an independent vote, and wants to highlight the problems we have in our city, it'd be nice if every now and then you'd stand up and actually do something. And when you look at our council in general, you know, when you talk to people in the city, they're just disgusted. They feel you're totally incompetent, just the whole administration. And you know, it is laughable because there's not a damn thing they can do about it. You just keep spending money, giving it to nonprofits, taking care of yourselves in the circle of supporters that the mayor has, and the residents get nothing. And you know, the city is actually disappearing right under our feet. We're tearing down more and more of this city every year, and the city is getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And the more money that we give to entities like Lackawanna College, University of Scranton, and we are giving to them because they are paying no tax, and they're collecting massive amounts of revenue from their students and the people who live in their campus housing. And the residents are taking it on the chin, week after week after week. And what do we do? We're talking about more tax increases. And like I said to a former council member, it was time for a 30% cut in the budget, and it's still time for that. And Mr. Amaroso coming back, look, he's out of holy water. Because when these judges are done with this city, I'm hoping that every resident that is pursuing this city in court would help their attorney do research and open a couple of new fronts, like all the homes that were condemned in the city of Scranton. Go up and get the condemnation book and find out where every one of these, what the reason was for every one of these houses being torn down. And if there is an address missing out of that book where a property was torn down, then I think the city should be compelled to come up with a reason why it was torn down and why it's not in the book. And really, there needs to be investigations on every level of government to put public officials in their place, and it may be prison. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Omen?
I'd like to say I received a nice letter from a taxpayer thanking me for complaining about the traps for animals because this person went through it in their neighborhood. And if council, if any of you had lost a pet because of these lousy traps by some piece of garbage that doesn't care about it, maybe you'd feel differently. Let me tell you, my friend in Little Rock phoned me, the stock and bonds man, and he's in finances like Mr. Joyce. He asked me to meet him in New York and he'd buy me dinner, so I'm here. I'm missing Perry Mason. I'm missing my wrestling at 8 o'clock. So you know, even if I don't say anything of consequences to y'all, then I do care about the city. I just want things to go on, but I told you I wouldn't fight with the mayor no more, but he's just pathetic. He brings a mosal back, the man with that lousy, sell everything and raise taxes. My friend refers to you, Mr. Evans, as the village king. Yes.
King?
I didn't know who he meant for a second because he reads the paper on his computer. And Mr. Donahue, if you want to take on Mr. O'Malley, that man could run circles around you with one leg all day long because he has political experience. Speaking for myself, hopefully, you'll never have the political experience because I told you the first day, people should be out here like that. These kind of people should be up there, not people that never cared enough to come to a meeting as you. But that's done and said and over with, you know? You violated one of Mr. Courtright's own rules. He doesn't want things, adversities mentioned from last year going back, and here you go 17 years. I got a quick question. It seems like the bridge on Parker Street was new in '96 or '97. Am I wrong? I remember big plates he used to drive over, and I thought they built a new bridge. Because it's been closed for 10 years? No. This morning, I looked outside my second store window to see if it was raining, and I heard a car horn, so I looked that way. And this fool opened the car door. She's parked on North Main Avenue where cars are going 50, 60, 70 miles an hour day and night. She got her door open, and she's holding a baby in one of those big baskets, and it's swinging all over the place, and she had the other hand in the car trying to get something. Why can't you get a city code where these fools like that can't open and take our children from the driver's side? And I had someone ask me about guns. I don't know the laws, but if a gun doesn't have a trigger on it or a wire through it and it's used in the commission of a crime, why isn't that person responsible as the person doing the crime? All these kids bringing guns to school and so forth. It seemed like it could be alleviated or slowed down. I had two different women talk to me real quickly at the grocery store about your little girl that was up here. Both of them didn't know her, but their children went to school with her. And they said, the little girl is just like the person she's protesting in her thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Omen.
That child needs to see somebody. That counseling from that school needs to do something with her. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Albert Young, Scranton resident. I come tonight as a friendly adversary for a change. Still no report from Riley, but that'll be something else. I am speaking on behalf of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association. I was elected to vice president this year, so I have a chance to speak for them. I'm speaking about the Sheets problem that has been mentioned many, many times here. The association last week voted unanimously in favor of accepting Sheets into the Scranton area as a business. Good, clean competition will help the area, also with jobs. Now, we have members from Pine Brook that are members of the association also because they don't have an association. They've joined us, and like I said, those people are unanimous, have unanimous vote with us. There's been a lot of talk about alcohol. Sheets sells beer, all right. There are two taverns across from the stadium, and they are frequented quite often during the week. And we want to talk about the discussion about the loss of income. Well, yes, there's going to be a little loss of income for some of the businesses, but I heard a 40% loss last week. I don't see where 40% is going to be lost by anyone that has a business a half mile away from where Sheets wants to put their business. Turkey Hill is the only one that really might have any loss at all, and they're not squawking as far as I know. Traffic congestion? Well, yeah, we have traffic congestion there. You have students that are coming and going during the day, but you only have probably a half 45-minute problem in the morning, and same in the afternoon with congestion because of the students and mommy and daddy picking up and dropping off the kids. All right, so we put up with a little imposition at that point. Now, last week, we had a politician write a letter, a scathing letter as a matter of fact, against Sheets. If this politician would have put as much effort into researching Sheets as he did putting that letter together, he may know how to come in out of the rain. Again, the association agrees with good, clean competition along with jobs. Traffic won't be hindered that much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Marie Schumacher, city resident. I'd like to start out tonight with the building at Adams and Mulberry Street. It used to be that when I saw it raining in April, I say, April showers bring May flowers. Now, every time it rains, I think of Mr. Young and Mr. Cerebro, both taxpayers for a goodly number of years. But then along comes the building at Adams and Mulberry, and all of a sudden, a nonprofit, not taxpaying, mind you, gets immediately $450,000. I would like to explain, you, anyone or all of you, to explain your version of why nonprofits are attended to like that, and the taxpayers who are loyal to the city are hosed regularly for many, 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 many years, far too many. Next, I would like to move over to something else that was in the paper. That's the zoning board okaying the apartments down there next to Kildares. I came over specifically to hear that discussion, and it was not pretty in my estimation. I have a lot of questions about what they did, and the hearing, a lot of it was lost even though there was a microphone at the table, and there was a microphone here, a lot of it was not that I could hear, at least in the back there. So I would like to know, I mean, they did what they wanted to do, but in the process of doing that, they, at least in one instance, they helped these people who want to build the building, and that's their choice, on the allowing for somebody who's advertised that they want children or young people, 20 to 28, to be residents in this building. They can forget about the minimum 600 square feet of space because of something in the code that says if you have six or more units for people 55 or over, then you may go ahead with these smaller units. So they were given that. The other thing they were given is, so that's a condition of their approval. And I would like to know from you people, because you appoint them, and I assume you know what's going on, who will be responsible? Will that zoning board be responsible for ensuring that those conditions are met? Or was that something that is just, was nice to put down so somebody could go ahead with a project and will never be enforced? That as far as I'm concerned? That, as far as I'm concerned, is, well, doesn't matter what I think. The minimum lot area has also, was also ignored, despite the fact that the solicitor was quite clear on that. He had a microphone of his own, I could hear him. Now, what I would like to know is, are you going to modify the code so that in the future, the minimum lot area could be reduced to whatever this one actually is? I think it was down from five hundred to three hundred. Because I don't know how any board could give one entity this kind of a waiver and not give it to the next person. I mean, how do you do that? That's, I thought that's why we had the rules. And so, I am concerned about those two items, and I think it might behoove you all to come to a meeting once in a while. There was a councilman at the meeting last week. But I would recommend that you all come. Now, a couple of things on, I thought there would be agendas when I got here tonight, but there weren't. So, it's all the ones on why our public parks are not going to be public anymore? Why are we giving long-term leases to anybody, sporting groups, other groups? If we're paying for public parks, I think they should be available to all the kids in the neighborhood who want to play at a park. And if I may finish on that item, because there is section, section nine C on all of those agreements states that if there is, that they are not allowed to give a third party an agreement unless they have the mayor's authority. And I don't, that's not sufficient for this taxpayer. If you're going to go ahead with these, which I don't know why you would, but if you're going to go ahead, it should be the mayor and city council should have to approve any third parties that are leased to. And I'll bring the brass back next week, good Lord willing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, counsel. My name is Ryan Nat. I apologize I didn't sign in. This is actually my first council meeting, so it's kind of exciting. I'm here actually to present a project that I am working on right now. I am a local taxpaying citizen, business owner, and Scranton School District teacher. I am establishing a new business called the Northeast Art Project. Its whole purpose is in facilitating and completing murals and public artworks in the northeast six counties of Pennsylvania. And we are basing ourselves out of Scranton since we're residents. Me and another artist actually painted the Scranton mural that is now established on the side of levels. It's amazing to see how many people come through on a weekend and take pictures of that. And we're trying to start and create a new brand for Scranton, another way to elevate the look of Scranton. When you come into the city, we have beautiful architecture, but within that architecture, we have a lot of drury walls, places falling apart. And our project is to help address that and see what we can do in cooperating with you in the future. I actually talked to Tom Welby, who is one of Marty Flynn's workers. I'm sure some of you know Tom Welby. And he talked to me about a project on Wyoming across from Ritz Theater. It looks like a big, round tunnel coming up with like an alien spaceship on top. Everybody knows, it's brown. It's right by the parking lot across the street. It's been getting tagged a ton, lots of graffiti. I actually contacted artists, and this artist would like to actually paint that for free. But we, Tom said, the city owns that or has the rights to that. We, I'm here to see about trying to get permissions to paint that. And I actually have on my laptop a proposed image that we would put on that if you would want to take a look at.
Which property was it again?
The spaceship on the 200 block of Wyoming.
Yeah, 200 block of Wyoming. It is a spaceship. It looks like a brown asteroid spaceship.
Ryan, I've been talking to the city solicitor, and if you stay after the meeting, I'll get you my email address. You may have it already.
I have your address.
We've started the process of getting permission for you to do that. So, if you can connect with me, we'll try to get that moved along.
Okay. I have the artist, and he's like willing to do it this May first Friday, and he's like pushing me. But I'm here just to try and see what we can do. The website we just established is Northeast Art Project is actually a website for, and we're just getting our foot, our legs underneath us. It is there for property owners and community leaders to submit walls and projects to us. We're not interested in getting public taxpayer funding at this time. We're actually trying to privately fund through like GoFundMes and whatnot to help to rebuffy and revitalize the city. We also have an area on that website for artists and volunteers to submit. And we're actually getting our first group business meeting coming up next week, and we have a big unveiling on May first Friday for it with a race car that we just painted outside the Scranton Electric Building. I just wanted to pass all the information to you. And Wayne, I will email you, and if you could just pass information on to me. And Tom is going to be acting as a consultant for us, for Lackawanna County, Marty Flynn, and hopefully with you guys.
Yeah, we talked about with Tom, because he's part of First Friday as well. So, I think, I think we're all interested in seeing this move forward. So, whatever we can do, I'm sure we'll be able to help.
And our goal is to maybe tackle five projects this year.
That'd be great.
One project, as a big project, I do want to tackle immediately or through approvals, because there's many hands involved, is actually all the street from Scranton High School all the way up to Cap House. There's a lot of private dwellings on that property. There's the mission house, the bridge. So many kids walk in that property all the time. We would just like to get the permissions to come in and paint that. And everything we're doing, we just want to do pattern, color, just brighten up the whole area.
Be great.
Thank you very much for your time. I will email you, Wayne, and I apologize, I have another meeting to go to. Good luck with this meeting.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ryan.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Last week, we had a mention of fire extinguishers from the fire depart, or fire alarms. I was wondering about fire extinguishers. It'd be nice if we, even if we had to pay to get the fire department to possibly recharge our used fire extinguishers. And once again, the trash bills and tax bills. I wonder, does anybody know when the trash bill is coming out and when it has to be paid by the state?
Today or tomorrow. But we're going to, we're talking about that, extending the period for the discount, so.
They're coming out tomorrow, or they're supposed?
Well, they should be out today or tomorrow, that's what we're told.
Okay, because I've been pinching my pennies, and I'd like to get that deluxe senior citizen holiday thirty-dollar discount. Okay. One thing we haven't had here tonight is the balcony open, and we have a very large crowd. So, it would be nice if we expect the large crowd to open the balcony up. People are standing for an hour now. And one other thing, we really need to make a prominent mention of cell phones off. There's, has been some ringing, and I don't want to pick on anybody, but if it's your first time, be advised that you're not supposed to have cell phones ringing away in your pocket. Now, once again, taxes are a big, big to-do. And I have always felt that city council, when I talk about state and national problems and issues, that you can't change them by yourselves. And I'm not blaming anybody, because these conditions exist. But for instance, we have thirty-five percent tax-exempt properties in the town. And Act 511 might just hang us, you know, the way it's written. So, my point is that being a representative body, it is my hope that someday council will start representing us to other higher entities in the government. And a little threat on a federal lawsuit on that thirty-five percent. I mean, it's just too much. So, no matter what you do, you're damned either way, because you're going to have to raise taxes to cover for an excessive amount of tax-exempt buildings. And I'm talking about government buildings, I'm talking about schools, I'm talking about everybody. It could be the, you know, too politically active church. It could be the Church of the Ku Klux Klan, for all I know. You know, when I see some of the crazy ideas down in Washington and with some of these activist groups, I wonder why in the heck they should ever be tax-exempt. I wouldn't have enough taxes to pay for all the people that would wind up in jail if the, what's his name? Certain organizations, social conservatives and stuff, Huckabee's and people like that. I wouldn't have enough money in my pocket. Now, I also, I probably will try to draft a letter, and I'm going to submit it in a week or two, on a non-lethal defense for schools, because I'm also adamant about that. It's time that everybody get on board and get some way of defending a school that a mistake isn't permanent, but we have a way to defend a school, because they're wide open right now. And all you can do is step on people who behave legally, step on their toes, and make life worse for them. So, I'll let you off with that, and thank you, and have a good night. But we really need to start pushing upstairs, you know, with our representative state and federal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, just two things real quickly to hit on. The first, it was brought up about Crowley Park and the timeline. Ms. Reed, if we can send a correspondence over to Mayor Cartwright, and then also, if you would, copy Mr. Fallon at Parks and Rec, we can get a response on that, because I know we did talk about that last year. So, things should be getting moving, and if not, what's the timeline? The only other thing I wanted to bring up today was item 5B. I'm going to go ahead and introduce that today, but there's just a lot to look at. Anytime new fees come down the pike, it's, we need to look at it very closely. The last thing we want to do in this city is, is put more fees on our citizens, on our ratepayers, on our taxpayers. So, the questions that immediately come to mind without actually getting to the licensing department is, how well do the fees that we already put in place work? Are we doing things to really increase quality of life, or are we doing things to be punitive? I don't think that any fee that a city puts out should be punitive in any way. These fees should be put there in a place just to make our quality of life a little bit better. Are there warnings going out before fees are imposed? So, there's just a lot of things on there. How did the fees come about? How were the, how were the figures? Are they based off something from another municipality, or they just come up at a meeting? You know, I'm not sure. So, there's a lot of questions there. I am going to introduce this ordinance, but you know, there's a lot to work to be done, sure, in the next week on, you know, the justifications of these, and are they going to be right for our city? Because there's just, you know, I can't sit up here and put another fee on us without total justification. I just can't do it. You know, I believe you brought up the thirty dollars for, you know, a dog license. You know, there's just, when don't we turn around and get feed in the city of Scranton? So, before we go ahead and enact new fees or increase new fees, I think we need to do our due diligence and make sure these are actually the right thing for the entire city. So, with that, I'll hold everything else for items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I'd just like to, I agree with Councilman Perry when it comes to the fees. The point of the fees shouldn't be to raise money for the city. It should be to be, you know, to be compliant with current codes. I think that should be the focus. And to follow up on, you know, the topic of garbage bills that I brought up last week and was also brought up here tonight, the discount period deadline currently is May first, which is two weeks tomorrow. So, I'd like to make a motion that council sends correspondence to the administration requesting that the deadline to be eligible for the ten percent discount be extended until May thirty-first.
Second that motion.
Motion is made in a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Thank you. I'd also like to just briefly comment on a topic brought up last week by Councilman Gahn regarding the Composite Pension Board's action on the allocations of proceeds from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. I would like to strongly urge the Pension Board to reconsider their recent decision to allocate sale proceeds based on the approved forty-five, forty-five, ten model. I'm making this request for the following reasons. First, the sewer authority was a public asset owned by each and every taxpayer of the city. Therefore, I believe it is imperative that the proceeds be reinvested in a way that is beneficial to all taxpayers. And since pension liability is guaranteed by city taxpayers, it is my opinion that the best possible outcome for all taxpayers would be to reinvest the proceeds in a way that equalizes the fundraising ratio for each pension fund. Now, I'm not naive enough to believe that we'll be able to equalize the funding ratios with just this one transaction. But I think it's important to point out that funding ratio equalization must be a long-term goal to stabilize the funds. Which also leads me to my next reason, which is the annual MMOs, or Minimum Municipal Obligations. From the city's perspective, if the goal of investing sale proceeds into the pension funds is to decrease the city's annual MMO, then the Pension Board should, at the very least, use a starting point, the funding ratio, of the funding ratio that the fund's actuary uses to calculate the MMOs every year. And that comes out to a fifty-two-point-three percent share for fire, thirty-nine-point-five percent for police, and eight-point-two for non-uniform. Now, this decision is ultimately in the hands of the Composite Pension Board. So, I urge each and every member to ask themselves, what is fair for all taxpayers? Not just what is fair for each union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
A few comments. On the Arcataze study, I talked to Mr. Bernie McGirl today, and he briefed me on where they're at, so I'll be getting some more information on that shortly. On the zoning board hearing, I agree with Marie. I was quite upset about the decision that was made. I feel that the code was misinterpreted that night, and I let my opinion know to the city planner, and hopefully something will come out of that. On the pension issue, as discussed by Councilman Donahue, the recent decision by the Composite Pension Board to split the approximately twenty-two million dollar of sewer proceeds in the following manner, forty-five percent to the firemen's fund, twenty, or forty-five percent to the police fund, and ten percent to the non-uniform fund was, in my opinion, a well-intentioned mistake. It leaves the firemen's fund still woefully underfunded, almost twenty percent below the other funds. It is my understanding, and certainly that of others, that any large infusion into the pension fund could have been treated as an opportunity to rebalance the funds, to bring them closer together, to make the aggregate more balanced and financially stronger. The city pensions are only as strong as their weakest link. This decision does not go far enough to strengthen that weak link. Sometime in the future, if we were to experience a severe downturn in the economy and/or the stock market, that weak link could fail, and the results for the pension fund and the city would be catastrophic. My hope is that there is still time for some type of conversation and compromise that will strengthen all of the pension plans. So, I am respectfully asking the members of the Composite Pension Board to take a second look at this. I remain confident that reasonable people can come up with reasonable solutions, even in the most difficult issues. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, just a few, thank you. Just want to read part of a letter here. We brought this up in the last few years when Councilman Wexler was here, because this is an issue that affects East Mountain. is an issue that affects East Mountain. Lackawanna, Lackawanna County is cooperating with the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the Bureau of Forestry, in conducting a gypsy moth suppression project in certain forested sections of the city of Scranton this spring. The insecticide will be applied by aircraft flying approximately 50 feet above the treetops sometime in May. So, this letter just has us, the city officials, notify city residents to avoid the possibility of eye irritation. Obviously, don't look up as the spray droplets are descending. Vehicles which are exposed to the spray deposit should be washed as soon as possible. If the deposit has dried, soaking a towel with a car wash product and water will rehydrate and the, and it can be removed by wiping with a towel or a cloth. If there are any issues, you can contact the local Bureau of Forestry office, Lackawanna Forest District at 570-945-7133 for further information. Also, it's been brought up a few times about the street cleaning schedule, the street cleaning program. The schedule for this year is posted on the city's website. It's my understanding, according to the DPW director, that the way that they did it this year was whoever was last on the list last year is now first on the list this year. So, I thought that was a fair way to do it. North Scranton will be first, April 30th to May 4th and May 7th to May 11th. So, I will be announcing that every week and again, it is on the city's website. I would make the recommendation again to the administration, I think there is a better way that we can do this, a more efficient way. I looked at what some of the other cities do, particularly Allentown. They actually have a street cleaning hotline with daily updates, their own webpage dedicated to street sweeping and designated days and times when there will be no parking on the street so that it can be actually cleaned. The one issue, and I brought this up before, is that people would move their cars if they knew exactly when the street sweeper was coming through their neighborhood, especially now even in, I know in front of my own house with all of the cinder and everything. You know, it would be nice to know exactly when the street sweeper is coming and I think there are ways that we can coordinate that, which take a lot of planning. So, I'd again recommend that the administration take that into consideration. We did not receive an update on the Lace Works project. I know that neighbors in the area are curious as to what stage the developers are at, so we'll update everyone when we get to that point. There is, received a complaint about a large pothole on the bottom of Capouse Street and Drinker Court, so we will send that to the DPW. At last week's meeting, I did bring up the composite pension board's vote to evenly split 90% of the $22.9 million in sewer sale proceeds between the fire and police funds with the remaining 10% going to the non-uniform fund. And I share my colleagues' concerns with the way that that went down. The board voted 5 to 2 with one abstention to approve the allocation and I have reached out to the mayor's office to find out on what grounds did the mayor abstain from voting. I find it, quite frankly, unbelievable that a vote of that importance with that magnitude to spend $22.9 million and put it into the pension funds and you have the administration abstaining from the vote and then not giving a reason for the abstention. So, I would like to know where the administration is on this issue. Were they against it? Were they for it? Why did they abstain? And as I mentioned last week, I really have to question this sense of the way that this vote went down. And I'll use the analogy that I used last week. If you have two patients who come in to the hospital, one's having a heart attack and the other one broke his thumb, do you give the same care to both patients? No. You take care of the patient who is having the heart attack. So, you have the fire fund, which is severely financially distressed, and you have the police fund, which is doing better. And we're going to evenly put $22.9 million in and the fire fund is still going to be severely financially distressed. I don't see the common sense in that. I think, as my colleagues mentioned, it should be revisited. Mr. Rogan has a vote on that board and he did vote yes, and I do disagree with that. I think that the board should take another look. I would like to know if the composite pension board took into consideration the new analysis that was paid for by the city and not the pension board. And why was the analysis paid for by the city and not? Why didn't the pension board pay for that? That's one question that I have. I don't think, as it was mentioned in the paper, that this was about fairness. Fairness keeps being brought up, that they should have been allocated, everybody gets the same amount. Fairness to who? The police union, the fire union? This is about taxpayer and ratepayer money. This is proceeds from the Scranton Sewer Authority that ratepayers paid for. This isn't anybody's money but theirs. So, it's not about fairness to either union, it's about fairness to the taxpayers in my opinion. And if the fire fund remains severely distressed and continues to erode, then everybody is going to be negatively affected because you'll eventually have to raise taxes. I would like to get an opinion from the Pennsylvania Economy League on where they stand on this issue. Do they think that this vote was the right vote to be taken? Were they consulted on whether this was the right move for the pension funds? Henry Amoroso, the mayor's financial advisor, what does he think? And most importantly, what does the mayor think? This is going to have a large effect on where we move forward financially over the next few years. So, again, I think we need to take another look. I would recommend that we have a public caucus with all of those involved in this and get their take on it because I'm quite frankly confused by the whole thing. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Two quick items. One, Crowley Park was brought up tonight and we also have a request that we sent in earlier in the week regarding the status on the Novembrino Park upgrades. Actually, three items. Next week, as was mentioned, council will bring from the table two pieces of legislation that have been discussed quite a bit, one being the vote on the traffic control signals for the Sheets Project. So, that will have an up or down vote at next week's meeting. And secondly, the engineering services for the Sorrenti Center will also be brought back from the table next week regarding an up or down vote. Regarding the pension board vote, you know, this was well, the 45-45-10 split was well publicized prior to the meeting and there haven't, there wasn't any objections from any of my colleagues or anyone as far as the city's financial advisors until after the vote was taken. So, it wasn't a secret that the pension board's plan was to split the funds 45-45-10. I believe it was in the Scranton Times two to three weeks prior to the meeting. And at that point in time, nobody had voiced any objections regarding that split. I do agree, you know, that there may be differences of opinions on how to best spend those funds, but during the course of the last couple of years, when contract negotiations between the police and fire union took place, concessions were on par between both unions. Each union gave a similar amount of an increase into the pension and each union gave a similar amount of their back pay back to the pension as a union concession as well. So, if the thought was to put more into one fund than another at that point in time, that should have been addressed during those union concessions as well. Certainly open to hear from others on that issue, but again, there was no comment on this and it was a well-publicized issue prior, prior to the vote on that 45-45-10 split that was in the Scranton Times. That is all. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with West Scranton Little League Incorporated for use of city-owned property for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2018 and ending April 14, 2021.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question? I'll only mention, just because it was brought up, this has been a longstanding practice with the Little League fields in the city that are technically, that are owned by the city. They're leased out to nonprofit organizations such as the West Grant and Little League who run them. They do remain public parks. The leagues certainly have the right to use them, but others can use them as well. And the West Grant and Little League is an excellent organization and I know for a fact they do a great job for the kids on West Side. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into a lease agreement with the Scranton School District for use of city-owned property as more fully described in the lease agreement attached here, too, as Exhibit A for a three-year period commencing April 15, 2018 and ending April 14, 2021.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 64, 2014. An ordinance as amended entitled, an ordinance adopting the quality of life and violations ticket process in the city of Scranton be amended to include a new definition in Section 2 definitions, new violations in Section 3, quality of life violations, and new fines and penalties in Section 9, fines and penalties.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question, I think it would be beneficial if we scheduled the caucus with Mr. Hinton because I do think there's a lot of questions about this legislation. One of the initial questions that I have is how the administration arrived at the fines that are in the backup here. So, I hope that we can schedule that within the next three weeks. Thank you.
On the question, I think as most people know, anytime I see an increase or an active any fees, I get a little worked up about it. I think that what we need really to do is finally resolve the fee and fine schedule that's throughout all departments in the city. I know I've talked about this before. So, I'll be asking the administration to authorize an RFP to contract with an independent third party to finally review all fees with the goal of reducing the mining and/or eliminating unnecessary fees. Too much time has already been spent on trying to make these changes internally. It's a very frustrating process, so I think it's time for a professional to take a good hard look at these through an independent prism. So, hopefully that commitment will be forthcoming. If it is, we may be looking at tabling this down the road, but for the time being, I think we move it ahead, get the information from Mr. Hinton as suggested by Councilman Gawn and see where it goes.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction of a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton Police Department and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $150,000.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question? All those--
Yes, on the question, sorry. You know, I just want to say, since I've been on council for the last four years, I just continue to be impressed by Chief Graziano and the Scranton Police Department and some of the really creative things that they're doing with technology. Now, this, I support this legislation and this program. The police department is going to be utilizing technology to target prevention efforts and improve officer performance. This is a state-of-the-art use-of-force virtual training program. All Scranton Police Department sworn officers will undergo virtual simulation use-of-force training that focuses on the de-escalation of dangerous situations and the utilization of force in a manner that complies with best practices. And just reading the backup here, it says, "Better-trained officers who are prepared for dangerous encounters that may require use of force, specifically with individuals suffering from mental and behavioral health issues while simultaneously building trust with the community." One of the interesting things, as I was reading through this legislation, is it says, "Another issue facing law enforcement is that they are first responders during incidents involving individuals with mental or behavioral health problems. In 2017, 180 individuals suffering from behavioral and mental health issues died in a law enforcement confrontation. It is crucial to equip law enforcement to properly recognize and handle individuals with mental and behavioral health issues. Using virtual simulation training on a regular basis is a proven method in helping officers prepare for these encounters, which all too often require some element of force." So, I think that, you know, this program is going to be such a great tool for the police department because, you know, the world that we live in, as everybody knows, is so complex and police officers are engaged in situations that are, can be at times confusing and when to use force, when to not use force. And we've seen really across the country over the last few years, some of these situations escalate. And I think that the police department is taking a really proactive approach by using this, this technology to train our officers. So, I want to again commend Chief Graziano and commend the police department for taking this initiative and using this technology the way they are. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction of a resolution accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Michael Crawford Multiscape Incorporated, 995 South Township Boulevard, Pittston, PA 18640, and Highland Associates, 102 Highland Avenue, Clark Summit, PA 18411, for repair of mortar joints, cutting and pointing to sections of the exterior facade at Vine Street, Dix Court, Mulberry Street, and North Washington Avenue sides situated at the Scranton Cultural Center, 420 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed with council number 12, 2018. An ordinance adopting the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, regulating and governing the conditions and maintenance of all property, buildings, and structures by providing the standards for supplied utilities and facilities and other physical things and conditions essential to ensure that structures are safe, sanitary, and fit for occupation and use. The condemnation of buildings and structures unfit for human occupancy and use and the demolition of such existing structures in the city of Scranton, providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore, repealing Section 1 of Ordinance Number 37, 2014, of the city of Scranton and all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, filed with council number 11, 2018, establishing a no-parking zone along the west side of Wyoming Avenue from 1.175 feet south of the intersection with East Gibson, excuse me, East Gibson Street to 1.325 feet south of the intersection with East Gibson Street to allow for driveway sight distance purposes as shown on the attached highway occupancy permit for the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson of the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Ed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 33, 2018. Appointment of Robert Gattens Jr., 528 Orchard Streets, Grant, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Mr. Gattens will be replacing Jude McCandrew, whose term expired December 31, 2017. Mr. Gattens will be appointed to a five-year term effective February 21, 2018 and will expire February 15, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B. Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
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 Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 34, 2018, authorizing the Director of Public Works to act as agent for the city of Scranton for emergency and disaster relief pursuant to the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act and authorizing city officials to execute the designation of agent and the PMA Public Disaster Assistance Application and Agreement for Financial Assistance.
As chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C. Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ed?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Meetings adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.